Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the November 15, 2021 Crestille City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please, Chris.
Grace Ellerman.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
President.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verchay.
Here.
Claudia Gazzal.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kuba.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we'll go with the agenda items. The first one is the approval of the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on November 1, 2021. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alderman Gazzal for the approval of the November 1, 2021 Crestille City Council minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Any questions, city attorney? Okay, thank you, Mike. Our management consultant, Steve Golden. Good evening, Steve.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have three items, just to follow up from last week's work session. First is, we've done a bunch of research on the deputy, excuse me, the clerk's position. I should have a memo to you sometime this week. There's some, I sent one out in the packets, or before the packet. We spent a lot of time, Mike, Mike Stanchi, Mike Stiff, to working on the different legalities, so we're still finishing that up. With respect to civil service, John Kelly, our civil service labor attorney, our schedules have been conflicting. We are going to speak by phone either Thursday or Friday and try to meet sometime next week and convene a civil service commission meeting to go over appointing me as the ex-official examiner. The third item is, we will have an executive session next week regarding the TIF litigation, to give everybody an update on the TIF litigation and where we're at with the Supreme Court ruling. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions, management consultant?
I have a question. Is there any way you can contact the garbage company to extend an additional week, just like last year, due to the weather?
Yes.
Fall, like leaves and not.
For yard, for leaf cleanup, yes, absolutely.
Yes, so we can do an extended for yard waste, an extra week or two.
I sure will.
They had that last, last year, and also didn't have any weather disaster this year, to say they worked extra, or?
Right, and we've had a very late fall, right?
Yes.
And it was warm for a while, a lot of leaves still on trees. Yep, absolutely, I will do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Steve. Moving on, Public Works Department, our Public Works Director, Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three agenda items in front of you tonight. The first one is an ordinance amending Title 13 of the Water and Sewer ordinances. First off, I just want to thank Mike Stiff from Spation Taylor for the yeoman's work that he did on this ordinance, putting it all together, as you could see the amount of changes that had to be made. This is colloquially known as the pre-treatment ordinance, so we went over this two weeks ago at a work session. If anybody has any questions, this will be the formal passage of the pre-treatment ordinance. As of Jan. 1, 2022, we would become an official pre-treatment authority with the United States Environmental Protection Agency. So this, the last step is the passing of this ordinance and shipping it off tomorrow to Chicago.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
And could I just jump in for a second? This one that's in the packet does not have the Section 1323O, but it's B.
Correct.
It's the big six.
Yes, and we had talked with council, we talked with council that we were only going to print that 60, 70-page document one time, so Section 1330 is not in here, but it will be in the full packet.
Just wanted to make sure that whatever gets sent to Chicago has.
Yep.
I will amend my motion to include what you just said.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazzal for the pre-treatment ordinance amending Title 13 of the Water and Sewer section of the city of Crestille. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1878.
The next item I have before you is the surplus of surplus equipment. The three items would be the, an eight Cubic Yard V-Box spreader, a 1987 Big Wheel sludge hauler, and a 2016 Ford Interceptor, which is from the police department.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for an ordinance authorizing disposal of surplus personal property owned by the city of Crestille. This was discussed last Monday night at the work session. Also, questions, or questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 1879.
The last item I have before you was talked about at the work session last week, is a contract with Strand and Associates for a Lake Michigan water allocation application. This was talked about last week in regards to the process moving forward. The contract came in under budget. We had talked about a, an estimated fee of not to exceed $131,000, or $135,000. It did come in at $131,000, and as I, this came in late into the agenda, it did make it on top of your packet. So this would be moving forward with Strand to come up with the allocation, up to including the submission to the IDNR, and then also any substantial, sequential meetings that need to take place, moving towards the Lake Michigan water allocation.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the IDNR allocation, the application contract for Lake Michigan water. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
The last thing I have for council tonight is just a reminder to council and all of our residents that we will be having four public forums the week of November 29. It would be November 29, November 30, December 1, and December 2. Information is on the city's Facebook page. We have a dedicated tab on the city website just for our future water supply. A message went out from the mayor last week in regards to letting residents know. We have a flyer that's going out on every single water bill. Residents are strongly encouraged to attend any of the four public forums. They be, they will be held at the Public Works Facility at 2090 Oakland Avenue, Chaney-Monji School, the Carolan Lakes Clubhouse, and Richland School. They will be starting at 6:30 each night of those four nights. Anybody who has questions, concerns, wants to hear the process that we went through in order to make, are working on towards making these decisions, feel free to come out, and we'll be excited to have as many residents as possible. So, thank you.
Just one thing on that, just for clarification, the Carolan Lakes is only for Caroline, correct?
That is correct. The Carolan Lakes, when that's part of the stipulations, even the clubhouse, was it for Caroline Lakes residents only, so.
Okay, and also?
Any residents, any resident is able to attend the one at Public Works, Chaney-Monji, or Richland School, and those dates again are November 29, November 30, December, and December 2 for those three.
Okay, and also, you're going to be working on a presentation to put on the website?
We are.
For those that cannot make it in person?
I talked to Ron Romero before the meeting. We're going to be working through some of those technological issues that we may have to get going with that, but we're, we're going to try our best to try to get something on the website, but also on Channel 6. So people who can't make any of the presentations would be able to at least hear the information, and then reach out with any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Well, couldn't you just film one of the things and play it?
Uh, we're working on the ability for having someone come out with a digital camera and doing that, on walking around, so we're maybe thinking about doing it here after the fact, or one of those. But we're, I'm working with Ron, and we'll see how that goes.
Mayor and council, I just want to just, to expand a little bit on what Mark said. First of all, kudos to Mark and to his staff for putting this together. Did an awesome job of putting this, you know, campaign together. So last week, we met with Robinson Engineering, their marketing people from Robinson, the mayor, myself, Mark, Strand, Chris Olm, and we are creating a marketing campaign, a strategy to get the information out. So we're doing a nice marketing campaign. It'll be kind of a step-by-step. One of the, and I think Mark probably went through about four of the steps already, just we were talking about, but it'll be a very, a good strategic document. They'll say, hey, this is what we're going to do to inform the residents to the best of our ability. And one, you know, Tina, absolutely, we want to try to film one of those meetings, update our tab on the webpage to make it as detailed and as informative as possible. We have charged Strand, and we have charged Robinson to come up with all the, the right facts for us. We want to make sure it's professional. We want to make sure that we get the information out, and we educate the residents the best we can. So again, kudos to Mark, kudos to Robinson Engineering for their marketing, and Strand has done yeoman's work as well.
Yeah, we certainly want to encourage as many people to come to one of these forums. We certainly want to hear your opinions. We certainly want to try to answer any questions that you may have. This will be a major decision for the city of Crestille for years to come. So we want to make sure that we're very transparent about the discussions, and get as many of the public opinions to be heard. So please try to join us on one of those days on November 29, 30, December 1, or 2. Anybody else? Questions for Public Works?
The last thing I have, Mayor, is we are still out street sweeping, so if residents could remember that it is against the ordinance to blow leaves into the street. We are out every day, we're going six days a week, 10 hours a day, to the leaves this year are falling at a rapid pace, so we're trying to make sure we get them all cleaned up and all the storm sewers cleaned, with the amount of rain we've been getting as well. So, we are out daily, so just residents could remember to try not to blow leaves or rake leaves into the curb and gutter. But, thank you.
Hey, Mark, could you also explain the format of the meetings? I mean, is it going to be all question and answer, or is it going to be breakout groups, or?
So, a, at this point, we have about, we have two different types of meetings we're working on. The first is a, you know, opening, opening statement, kind of overview. Then, as you mentioned, some breakout sessions, where we'll have a couple different, a few different stations, where residents will go to multiple stations, ask individual questions, and then a whole group Q and A at the end. And then, we're also looking at a presentation style. So we're kind of incorporating both. We like the concept of residents being, get up, look at the posters, see stuff firsthand close, have that one-on-one, one-on-one conversation with staff and our, and our consultants, but also being able to ask group questions in that setting as well. Kind of giving the residents multiple opportunities to ask their questions, so they have the information they need.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on, our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item I have for you tonight is looking for approval for intergovernmental agreement between the County of Will and the city of Crestille for the improvements at the intersection of Weber Road and Nap Drive. The county has initial, our initial request of 25% was approved by the Transportation Committee. That is what's in this agreement. So there would, all we're paying for is 25% of the design and construction costs. They're picking up the remaining 75%, along with 100% of any utilities, and/or you, right away, acquisition that might be needed for the project. Right now, the schedule is, we're going off RFPs and collecting them, but in the month of December, getting a design contractor on board early next year, design through 2022, with potential construction in 2023, so whatever design comes out of the design process.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Sepiti, for the intergovernmental agreement between the County of Will and the city of Crestille for improvements at the intersection of Weber Road and Nap Drive and the County of Will. Questions or comments?
Good job.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. I just wanted to thank Ron for all the work that he's done with this, and, and the negotiation too, with the cost sharing. It's, it's huge, so, thanks, Ron.
It is a very dangerous intersection when you're coming southbound down Weber Road.
Yes, it is.
Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate, oh, I got Nate Albert. Thank you. Ordinance 1880.
18 what?
1880. I'm sorry, we don't need an ordinance on that one. Everything's falling down over here.
Oh, it says ordinance on it.
Okay, well, my paperwork does not show on it, but, okay, 1880.
Anything else, Ron?
Um, just one more item, just to let you know, this year's sidewalk and concrete project has ended, and we're finalizing the paperwork. But with that being said, if you can start thinking about next year, if anything that you have, you know, send it my way, so that I can start compiling a list for next year, and start looking at those locations over the winter months. Do you still have that area that I sent you guys over there off Pioneer where it stops and starts again? Yes. Is that on the project for next year? Yes. Because that's just crazy. No, no, got it.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Moving on, Community Development Department, you do have the report in your packet. Mara will be here tomorrow. Police Department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening. Over, just want to remind our residents that there's no parking on city streets after two inches of snowfall, that we, we were reminded just a couple days ago that it's coming and, coming soon, so that just allow the emergency traffic to get through and to help out the plow drivers. They do a great job, but we can get the streets clear, make sure everybody's safe, so. That's all I have this evening.
Any questions of the police chief? Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the mayor's report. I have two agenda items this evening. This is a very special night, very exciting night for the city of Crestille. The first item that I would like to have on the agenda item tonight is the employment, employment agreement between the city of Crestille and James Marino. Just some opening comments before we move forward with the two agenda items. First, let me state that the city of Crestille went on a national search for the replacement after Heather McGuire left the city of Crestille and gained employment at St. Charles. We had, from the national search, we had a starting of 34 applicants. They were applicants, several from the, from Illinois, but they were from several different states, who had applied. The council and the mayor had our first round of interviews. We selected six applicants for interview. Those group of interviews were done on October 26 and October 27, 2021. Out of those six interviews, we came back with two candidates for a second round, which was on November 2. I will tell you that we had two very exceptional candidates from the interview process. However, with that being said, I will tell you that my recommendation for our next city administrator, city administrator is Jim Marino. Jim was very impressive in both of the interviews that he had before city council. He's a very confident individual, and I'm very confident that this relationship will be good for the city of Crestille also. Jim also comes with 30 years of experience in local government. He has spent his last 22 years working for the village of Homewood. He has been the village manager at Homewood since 2012, and he served as the assistant village manager before that. Earlier in his career, he was the city administrator, or the city, the village manager in Thornton, Illinois. One of the things that I really liked about Jim was the fact that the village of Homewood is very similar to the city of Crestille, both in population and in demographics, and the fact that Jim has been working his entire professional life in the south suburbs, south suburbs of Chicagoland. I also see in Jim a very calm demeanor. I see that Jim is a well-spoken individual, and one of the things that impressed me very much was his strong work ethic that he has displayed for the last 30 years. He came across as a very creative thinker, gave us a couple ideas that maybe we can certainly try to expound on here in the city of Crestille from his past experiences, and he's also a man that, in my mind, is very well-educated and a very organized individual. I personally believe that Jim has the leadership skills to move our city forward during this time in our history, after 60 going on our 62nd year. Jim has much experience in economic development and redevelopment from his past experiences, which will be, will be a positive for us here in the city of Crestille. He has a focus on community engagement and relationships, which will be very welcomed in the city of Crestille also. And the professional demeanor that he will bring to this city to lead us as our new city administrator will also be very welcome. With that, the first agenda item that I would like to ask for council's approval in concurrence with is for the employment agreement between the city of Crestille and James Marino.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Sepiti, for an employment agreement between the city of Crestille and James Marino. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, and I would also ask, I would recommend the appointment of James Marino as city of Crestille's next city administrator.
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Gazzal, for the approval of James Marino, to the appointment of city administrator for the city of Crestille. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to introduce the new city administrator, which will be effective December 20, 2021, Mr. Jim Marino.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to working with you and staff and community members to bring about as much as we can for the city of Crestille. You have a lot of good things going on in the future, a lot of good opportunities, a lot of things I've worked on in the past, and I look forward to doing everything I can to help the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget the wife. I'm not used to her being at meetings with me, so. This is my, my lovely wife, Sue.
All right, stay there, Jim. I'm going to ask city council if they have any comments they would like to make.
Well, I guess it all starts if nobody wants to. Well, I want to start by saying welcome. Congratulations to our city, because it's our city right now. You do have big shoes to fill, I don't have to say.
Oh, I know, I know.
This is a very sweet, Steve, it's been amazing. So hopefully he will walk you through the whole process, and I have no doubt that you will take us in the right direction. I am looking forward to, to work with you and make a lot of changes in the city. So welcome again, and please be patient with us, because he's going to be working a lot.
That's fine. That's fine.
She's used to that.
Congratulations, Jim. Welcome to the city of Crestille. Thank you. Welcome to the city. Looking forward to working with you. Hopefully we can get a lot going here. Thank you. Right, thank you.
Yeah, welcome to the city of Crestille. There is a lot on our riving, but I have no doubt that you have the shoes, I have the fillin'.
I'll say welcome up, and I'll also say, giddy up cowboy, get ready.
Well, congratulations, Jim, and welcome to the city. Look forward to working with you. I think we all are. We're all anxious to, to get things moving in the right direction, and I'm, I'm, I'm very confident that, that you will help us do that, so, welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, same here, Jim. Really impressive interview both times. We learned a lot, even as we expounded on some of the questions, to get a little more out of you, so I'm very, very excited to work with you.
Right, thank you.
Welcome, Jim. Look forward to getting to know you better and working with you.
Thank you.
And Sue, welcome, Sue, to Crestille.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm very confident that you're the right choice for us to lead us at this, this time. I look forward to a great relationship with you for a long time to come. And welcome to Sue, also to the city of Crestille.
Thank you.
So we will, we'll keep in contact, and we'll certainly see you on December 20.
I thought you were starting tomorrow. Just kidding.
As soon as Steve is ready for me, I'll get started.
You'd probably say about, after the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, and welcome.
Congratulations.
Okay, that's all the agenda items for the mayor. I certainly just want to wish everybody a Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving that's coming up here in a couple weeks. Spend some time with your family. Be blessed for everything that you have in your family life and everything else. So, everybody just have a great day, spend, and have a lot of traditions and memories of, of your family. And with that, I will try to entertain any questions that anybody may have of the mayor. I thank you again for your consensus with the choice of our new city administrator, and I believe it's going to be a great relationship. Moving on to our city clerk's report, our city clerk, Christine Verchay. Paul, good evening, Chris.
Good evening. I have nothing to report. The clerk's office likes to welcome you, Jim, aboard, and we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have to report.
Any questions of city clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. City treasurer's report, our treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular and overtime payroll from October 25, 2021, through November 7 of 2021, in the amount of $216,748.11. I seek a motion on our list of bills to approve them in the amount of $885,421.8.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal. John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
I called you Nate, right?
Yeah, yes, again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Next on the items, we have the notice of proposed property tax increase for the City of Crest Hill. That's simply the black box. That does not require publishing, as we're not seeking any additional funds over what we're allowed. The next we have up is the revised investment policy, as I went over on the works at the work session, is this is something that we're going to look at annually. This has to do with the prudent and responsible investment of the city's money. Basically make sure that we always preserve our assets, that we operate ethically, that we're prudent with what we do, and that we always preserve our assets and never put them in any type of a jeopardy. So we're always collateralized, we're always guaranteed, and we we make certain that we never lose any money. So I would ask for your approval of this investment policy, and thank you, John.
We have a motion by Alderman Verche, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the revised investment policy for the City of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I thank you all for that. Next, I'm going to turn over to our Director of Finance, Lisa Benavides, the remaining pieces that have to do with our tax levy.
I have to pull my mask down because my glasses are foggy and I apologize. As you will recall from the last work session, we're seeking approval tonight for the property tax levy in the amount of $2,417,083. This is an increase over last year's extension of 4.99%. So we are in compliance with PTAL, do not have to have a truth in taxation hearing. And the breakout between the funds would be from the corporate, $1,537,83. Police pension, $840,000, and then $20,000 each to IMRF and Social Security. So are there any questions related to this? I've got a couple more things to go through. So with your approval, that will then be filed with the county.
Motion would be in order?
So move.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an ordinance for the 2021 tax levy. Again, all these items were discussed last Monday night at our work session also. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1881.
And just to expand a little bit on the statistical information, so similar to previous years, the city ranked its property tax rate with 36 neighboring municipalities, with one being the lowest tax rate and 36 being the highest. So the City of Crest Hill came in at 17 with a rate of .5573, and the average tax rate among the 36 municipalities was 1.07. And then if a Crest Hill resident was to look at their property tax bill, they would see that the City of Crest Hill's property tax cut of that total is 5.86%, and then the remaining spread out of the other taxing bodies. And then that would actually be decreased if the residents took advantage of the 25% property tax rebate, which would then bring that percentage that they would pay to the city at 4.4%. So are there any questions just about the statistical information?
Just one comment, Lisa, in addition to what you stated, the tax rate for the City of Crest Hill has decreased every year since 2014, so City Council and the City of Crest Hill should be very proud of that fact also.
Absolutely. So which sort of leads me into the next topic. So the next two items on the agenda are for ordinances for the annual abatement of principal and interest for the Series 2019A and 2019B general obligation bonds. So due to Council's fiscal responsibility and prudent management of the city's financial resources, the city is asking for approval, for Council's approval to abate the principal and interest payments for 2021 for both of these general obligation bonds.
So move.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alder Person Oberlin for an ordinance for the annual abatement for the principal and interest for the general obligation bond series 2019A.
These are going to be two separate, you need to do one for the A series and a one for the B series.
Yeah, this one is 2019A. Correct. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Ordinance 1882.
Okay, and then I would ask for a motion for the ordinance for the annual abatement for the principal and interest for the general obligation bond series 2019B. Motion by Alderman Verche, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an ordinance for the annual abatement for the principal and interest for the general obligation bond series 2019B. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin. Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1883.
And so then I just have two housekeeping items that will require the mayor and the clerk's signature, council's approval of the agenda items that have been presented. And one of them is for the certificate of compliance with truth and taxation, that would be the mayor's signature, and the other would be the certificate of the tax levy, basically saying it's true and correct, and that would be by the clerk. And that's it.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Dyke. We'll do the first one for the certification, for the mayor's signature to be applied to the certification of compliance with the truth and taxation form. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And motion would be in order for the completion of certification of the tax levy form. We have a motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Verche for the mayor to affix his signature to the certification, completion of certification of the tax levy form. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just say one thing.
Sure.
Just I want to say, you know, awesome job by Lisa and by Glenn. Collaboration, a lot of work together on this, a lot of collaboration with staff, and we can't be more pleased than having Lisa as our Finance Director. She did a great job. She's very collaborative. If she doesn't know the answer, she finds it. She works really well with Glenn, myself, and we're just really, really happy with Lisa. I'm just not saying that because she's here, but you do owe me lunch. But awesome job putting all this together, especially coming in new, and there were some things that we had to find out, and she did a great job of getting it done.
Steve, I want to second what you just said, and you're so professional about how you present everything.
Have a smile.
Greatly respected and appreciated.
Thank you.
I really do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Lisa, for the record, he doesn't say that about you. He says bad things. Just kidding. No, but I do have to agree with everyone said here. You have taken it to the next level, and we thank you. Thank you so much.
There and above. Great job.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for either Glenn, our Treasurer, or Lisa, our Finance Director?
If no one has any questions, I just want to say thank you for picking up the ball on this and running with it. Lisa's been a breath of fresh air and a remarkable asset for the city, and I'm very blessed and happy to have you to have you to work with. This has been a been great. So and I want to thank Mayor and Council for just doing a great job with us on this. So thanks a lot, and good night, and happy Thanksgiving.
Okay.
For everybody.
And I agree what's been said. Thanks to Glenn and to Lisa. You guys work very well together, and it's been it's been a good relationship, so thank you very much. All right, unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business, anybody? Committee liaison reports, anyone? City Council comments, positive City Council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We begin with word one tonight, Alderman Dyke.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish all the residents and their families a blessed and healthy Thanksgiving. Hopefully that, you know, we just don't use the one day as a day of giving thanks. We need to give thanks every day because we're all so blessed. Thank you.
Alderman Verche.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and a safe Thanksgiving, and rest of the year too.
Word to Alderman Jefferson.
I'd like to say happy and safe Thanksgiving to everyone, and I'd like to commend our director and city engineer, Police Chief and Finance Director, and our new city administrator, because you guys are rocking, man. I'm very proud of the City of Crest Hill and the work you guys are doing.
Alderwoman Gazal.
Jim, I want to welcome you once again. Congratulations, and I look forward to work with you. I want to wish all the residents, staff, City Council, and Mayor, happy blessed Thanksgiving. And on that note, let's not forget the people that need that need us at this time, that we have to come together.